Need 25. I want to thank you all for being here. If anybody out in the audience needs hearing devices, please come up to the front. Ms. Swanson can help you out with that with hearing devices. So to avoid meeting disruptions, please place cell phones in the silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. All meetings are recorded. When addressing council, please sign in, state your name, and speak clearly into the microphone. Thank you for understanding. It's very important that we know who is commenting up at the pulpit. Line item one, Pledge of Allegiance, and I'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. Thank you. Get started. Line item 1.2, roll call. Ward one, Councilman Hannan is present. Ward two, Councilwoman Zaburski is present. Ward three, Councilman Lau is present. Ward four, Councilman Torres is present, and Ward five, Councilman Mendoza is present. 1.3 is public forum. This is a portion of the meeting devoted to the public. The public may comment on any matter that is not specifically included on the agenda as an action item. Items not included on this agenda cannot be acted upon other than to place them on a future agenda. If you wish to comment, you can do so in person at this meeting, or raise your hand featured in Zoom, or star nine if you're participating via phone. Public comments are limited to three minutes. Please avoid repetition. The mayor may, at his discretion, hold comments until the second public forum at the end of the meeting. Public comments submitted prior to 4:00 p.m. the day of the meeting will be provided to city council and added to the record but will not be read during a live meeting. Any public input received after 4:00 p.m. the day of the meeting will be included in the record but may not reach council members before action is taken. Is there any public input at this time?
My name is Don McGwin, longtime Furnley resident, neighbor to the Honorable Mayor. Real brief, I just want to say I got the opportunity to attend the Fernley Town Mayor's sweep, clean sweep, this past Saturday, and I just thought it was a wonderful opportunity for me to go there and to participate. I hope, I thought it was really well put together and want to thank the mayor and of course, April Homie, I'm not quite sure how she pronounced her name, but she did a great job there. And those that don't have their time and efforts, hero and waste management. So I just want to thank you all for that and look forward maybe to another one in the near future. So thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
Tammy Dipman for the record. First, I want to say, I guess I've pretty much given up on the hydrants ever being tested, especially when I was lied to by possibly the mayor when he said that you were in talks with the fire department. First of all, as far as I know, you haven't talked to anybody at the fire department unless it's something that nobody knows. Secondly, there should be no discussion between the fire department and the city of Fernley because the city of Fernley is the one responsible for the inspections. All you have to do is find somebody who can go out there, inspect the hydrants as they're supposed to be, and get it done. The fire department doesn't have the manpower and it's not their responsibility. So again, don't know why you guys can't take care of the infrastructure, but you can take care of new stuff like a fishing pond. But the hydrants should be the most important thing to get done since it hasn't been done for 10 years. But you know, this will be the last time I'm speaking about it because obviously the city of Fernley doesn't give a crap about our safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the mic on?
Okay.
Now we can hear you. Start over again, please. I'd like to talk about code enforcement officer. Three or four months ago, the council voted to hire a person to work in that position. I don't believe that's happened yet. I'm curious why it hasn't. I'm curious if there's anyone on the dais in front of me obstructing that hiring process. I just don't understand. The lack of activity, I'm not impressed with. I liken it to a city circling lower and lower into a cesspool of non-management. The city council is supposed to act by example. Right now, the city council, with its lack of direction, contributes to chaos among city staff. City operations often appear to be disorganized. NDOT does not take the city seriously, even failing to show up at the Condor Study public meeting held August 7th. We seem to be the laughing stock of the county. And it's possible that some consultants and contractors may take advantage, the city staff, because the staff is not consistently competent. Many folks I've talked to describe the atmosphere at City Hall with city employees as extremely toxic. I would agree. My experience has been quite poor. It's tough to run a city like that, and I hope it'll change sooner rather than later. Thank you. Thank you. Do we have any further public comment?
Good evening, Mayor. For the record, my name is Jim Sullivan. A few meetings ago, we listened to Councilman Hannan, author of an agenda item, to complain about other members of the council not being held accountable for attending city council meetings via Zoom and that they should be held accountable if they weren't physically at the meeting. That attending the meeting via Zoom was unprofessional because city council members are held, quote, "to a higher standard." Then a month later, we had a Councilman Lau have an altercation with the road crew and was ultimately arrested. The citizens, aka the voters of Fernley, spoke up and demanded answers and accountability. Then, because the voters asked for it, Councilman Mendoza stood up and placed an item on the agenda to have the discussion of possible accountability for Councilman Lau. When that happened, Councilman Hannan decides to bring up the past of Councilman Mendoza. Councilman Hannan brings up a situation that happened well over 20 years ago in what appears to be out of childish spite. Looks like accountability for others only applies when it's convenient. Never mind the fact that after Councilman Mendoza paid his debt to the state in full, Councilman Mendoza went back to school and worked his way up in the trades to the point where he owns his own company. Not to mention while doing this, he became a firefighter that has grown and earned the rank of captain. Did I mention that he did all of that while being a single dad and raising a son? A son who has graduated high school and attended college and is now currently working in the trades building his own name and reputation. I find it interesting how you didn't have a problem with his past when he was elected in the first place. You didn't have a problem with it while he was growing his career in the trades in the fire department. You didn't have a problem with it when he built his own company from the ground up. Why didn't you bring this up before? We have here a minority man that was a teenager who looked at the road his life was on and saw his son's future. This teenager then found God. He made the decision to leave the streets. He took his son out of that environment where he would end up in the streets and moved to another state and started over. This is the type of character and integrity and most important, the type of leadership this city and city council needs. Councilman Hannan, I hope you understand that the citizens and voters of Fernley are not dumb. It is in my opinion that actions like these is why Fernley has the reputation we have from our surrounding communities. It is actions like this we as voters will remember next election year. You and a couple other members of our city leadership seem to have forgotten that you are servants of the people that voted for you and this city. I hope that you remember that these immature childish actions will not be forgotten by the voters come reelection. If you can learn anything from what is going on in this country today, we the people are fed up. Start acting like the people we expected when we elected you. Thank you.
Thank you. We could hold the applause, please. Thank you. Any other public input at this time? Do we have anybody on Zoom? And nobody on the phone? Okay. We will now move on to line item 1.4, looking for approval of the agenda. Councilwoman Zaburski?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Councilman Mendoza?
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Zaburski, seconded by Councilman Mendoza. Please vote. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. We'll now move on to line item two, consent agenda, looking for a motion on the consent agenda. Councilwoman Zaburski?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Councilman Mendoza?
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Zaburski, seconded by Councilman Mendoza. Please vote. Motion carries 5-0. Ms. Swanson, would you please read the business licenses at this time?
Yes, sir. Tonight we have CFT, NV Development, Commercial Property Rentals, Telkus Construction, General Contractor, Kenfolk LLC, Cleaning Services, Sierra Summit Solutions, Construction Consulting Services, Bruno's Plumbing, Plumbing Contractor, America Steel Company, Steel Structure Contractor, Ted Bellard, Commercial Property Rentals, LND Pilot Service, Pilot Escort Services, Aqua Guard, Pool Services, Higher Frequency Healing, JDSLE Software Company, United Rentals, Equipment Rentals, Del Berio, Sobreros Mexicanos, Mobile Food Vendor, Luther Towing, Las Vegas, Towing Services, AT&amp;T Mobility, New Commercial Location for Cell Phones, Innovative Communication Systems, Electrical Contractor, and Sierra Coast Roofing and Siding, Roofing Contractor.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Swanson. We will now move on to line item three, reports. This is various public entity representatives to provide general information to council and public. No action will be taken at this time. Is there anybody from the sheriff's department? Sheriff Poe?
Good evening, council. Mr. Mayor, Lyon County Sheriff Brad Poe, for the record. Want to say that we are happy to participate in the mayor's clean sweep, providing an inmate work crew to help along with the community and get the dog park and some other areas cleaned up in the city of Fernley. Anytime you need us, give us a call and we will provide that same service. Our deputies, sergeants, chief deputy continue to work hard in the Fernley area, working and running the mission as directed. That being said, our response times remain low. Our priority one, response times remain under six minutes, priority two, under eight minutes, and priority three, under 11. It's a big change. Deputies are running the mission and doing a really excellent job, responding fast and professionally with zero accidents and doing really well. We did have an incident from the intermediate school since last time we gave the report. Male subject was tased, taken into custody, but no children were present and everybody was okay except for the deputy. But he'll heal up and he'll be ready to go. Currently, our command staff is in Santa Clara. That's why the chief deputy's not here tonight. We're revamping our internal affairs investigation system. Some of those policies and procedures have been there since council member Torres was the undersheriff, and it's time to get into modern times and those policies. Also, we are looking forward to the future with the sheriff's office. We just hosted a leadership class for all of our supervisors in the agency, and we're trying to build them up and give them the tools to operate successfully and lead the sheriff's office into the future. So with that, thank you, and that's all I get.
Any questions from council? Councilwoman Zaburski?
I don't have a question, but I just wanted to thank you for being the main speaker at the 9/11 memorial. I think you did a really good job. I didn't ugly cry, but I was really close and just, I know that's such a hard event to just speak to, being in your position, and you just did such a good job. So thank you.
That is probably the hardest speech I ever had to get. It was tough to get through. So thank you for recognizing that. I appreciate that.
All right. No further questions. Thank you. North Lyon County Fire? Mr. Bill? No report? Okay, thank you. Anybody from the school board, any other public entity? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and start with our council. Let's go with city manager, acting city manager, Lydia Altek, first.
Good evening. I do have one exciting announcement, first time event. The Friends of Fernley Animal Services are putting on a Howl Owen 5K walk run on September, sorry, October 19th, which is a Sunday, and that'll be starting around 10:00 a.m. at the out-of-town park. So bring your dogs and participate. There's going to be vendors and it's going to be a really cool occasion, and this supports the Friends of Fernley Animal Services that are hoping to build an animal services shelter boarding facility someday. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Let's start with Councilman Hannan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing at this time.
Councilwoman Zaburski?
I just wanted to thank the Veterans Coalition for putting on the 9/11 memorial event. It was, it's always been such an amazing event, but they did a really great job at doing it. We just had another successful softball tournament at the out-of-town park if you're wondering why it was so chaotic out there. And that went really smoothly. Our girls have now started into all different sports, so we didn't come out winning, but it was successful. I have one more thing. Maybe come back to me if I remember.
I will come back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Lau?
I have nothing.
Councilman Torres?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I've got a couple of things, all very positive. The first thing was the mental health nonprofit, first annual NAMI Western Nevada Golf Tournament went amazingly. We had 56 people sign up. 54 players showed up that day. All 18 of the tee boxes were sponsored. All those sponsors came from, 17 of the 18 sponsors came from the businesses here in Fernley. Thank you guys for doing that. And the other big sponsor was American Ready Mix. We had the countywide debt management meeting on Monday, and that committee agreed to award or to fund $30 million countywide for our schools in the Lyon County School District for improvements. 4.1 million of that is specifically for Fernley schools. So that was, that was a very exciting event. And then we had the regional manager for Economic Development Authority, which is the federal authority, and she was out here and spent a week, four days, with Western Nevada Development District, looking at the region, Reno, Sparks, Douglas County, Story County, Carson City, and Fernley. She spent the whole day out here at Fernley looking at our water treatment plant and our sewage treatment plant, and she believes that she is able or may be able to get us funding. The plan and design for the new sewage treatment plant, she says at least a 50-50 check. Well, the feds will pay 50% of that, possibly because of the region. The county has some areas that were declared a disaster area several years ago from the floods, possibly an 80-20 split to where the city of Fernley is only paying 20% of that planning and design. So that's a huge deal as well. And then on October 2nd is the annual Boys and Girls Club Awards Dinner, and the Truckee Meadows Boys and Girls Club, along with the Fernley Boys and Girls Club, have decided to bestow the honor of Distinguished Service Award to the city of Fernley for all the work that council, the mayor, and especially staff has put into getting that first building out there. And I can tell you that we're still working with the Truckee Meadows Boys and Girls Club on seeing what we can do to fund the Early Learning Center. So we're making a lot of progress with that. Staff has been amazing with that, but nothing but good, positive things that are coming this way. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Torres, Councilman Mendoza?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to thank the Fernley Senior Citizens Committee. They came out to the fire department on the 5th and visited us while we were on shift, and I had a great time with them. We had to cut our time short with them because we did get calls and emptied the barns, but we were excited to have the senior citizen advisory committee out there, learning about their fire department. So thank you, girls.
Okay, thank you. I have a few things also that I'd like to report, all positive as well. First of all, I would like to congratulate our finance department. Once again, this Government Finance Officers Association, our finance department receives a certificate of excellence, achievement for excellence in finance reporting. And how many years? This is the third year in a row, I believe? I know two for sure.
I'd have to go back and check, but it's been quite a few in a row.
Yeah, it could be as many as five. So anyways, I want to thank our finance department for a job well done in our finance reporting, which means we're doing a very good job. Also, the 9/11 remembrance ceremony was very heartwarming and touching. I want to thank North Lyon County Fire Department for their participation, Lyon County Sheriff's Department for their participation in that as well, and the Veterans Coalition for sure. It's something that I look forward to every year on this remembrance and something that I will never forget myself. I would also like to comment on the first ever mayor's recycle and clean sweep. I would like to have this every year. The recycle went very, very well. Opened up at 8:00, and it was supposed to go till noon, but because there were so many people there, we had 119 trucks and trailers show up to unload garbage that, who knows, could have been dropped off in the desert instead. It's going for recycle. That included tires, batteries, bicycles, washers, dryers, refrigerators, paint. And so it was, it was a great success, and I have a lot of people to thank for that. First of all, Waste Management, Hero Environmental, Redwood Materials for their collaboration in making this happen here in the community. Also, I would like to thank Q&amp;D Construction, ERGS Properties, Buddy Boy Donuts, and Big R. And also, a really special thanks to Lyon County Sheriff's Office for bringing over some of the inmates, and they cleaned the out-of-town dog park which desperately needed. So I want to thank them for that as well. And let's see, that's all I have as far as that goes.
Mr. Mayor, real quick. I forgot.
Yeah, go ahead. Councilman Torres, and then Councilwoman Zaburski, you remember what you wanted? Okay. Councilman Torres, and then Councilwoman Zaburski?
Sorry about that. I forgot. This, the 27th and 28th of September is the Stay Humble Fall Event, Fernley Softball Tournament at the out-of-town park. And if you go to the Legacy Sports website, they'll give you the times and who's in the tournament, and I think it's round robin. But the 27th and 28th of September at the out-of-town park will be the next softball tournament. Thank you.
Councilwoman Zaburski?
I just wanted to thank our Public Works Department. Our Streets Department has been diligently working up off of sage, repairing all of the culverts that got washed out during the last rainstorm. They've been up there every single day, and I know that they're kind of working their way from, from the ones that got washed out the worst to the ones that are a little bit better. So, but I'm very grateful that they've been out there working every day. So thank you.
Okay, that's it. We will move on to proclamations by the mayor, and I do have one for Hispanic Heritage Month 2025, and I'll read it. Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated each year from September 15th to October 15th to recognize the histories, cultures, and contributions of Americans with ancestry from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and South, Central, and South America. And whereas the date of September 15th is significant because it's anniversary of independence for Latin American countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. In addition, Mexico and Chile celebrate their Independence Day on September 16th and September 18th respectfully. And whereas the city of Fernley is proud to be the home of a vibrant Hispanic community consisting of nearly 5,000 residents who contribute greatly to the economy, culture, and well-being of the city, and whereas drawing from their rich histories, Hispanic cultures are extremely diverse and lively, and with focuses centered on family, faith, cuisine, music, dance, and much, much more. And whereas Latino communities have made innumerable contributions to the advancement of businesses, education, medicine, arts, and the public service. Now therefore, I Neil E. McIntyre, Mayor of City of Fernley, along with city council, do hereby proclaim the month of September 15th, 2025 through October 15th, 2025, Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Fernley and urge all residents to learn more about Hispanic history and culture. In witness thereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Fernley, Nevada to be affixed the 17th day of September 2025. And here to set this ward was mentioned to me that, I'm going to give this to my wife, Victoria Mendoza McIntyre. So every year at this time, I try to spread this around on who is a recipient of this proclamation. So anyways, thank you for that. We'll now move on to line item five, presentations. 5.1, presentation by Bridget Poson, Executive Director, American Red Cross Northern Nevada Chapter.
There we go, my first city council meeting. So thank you so much for having me. I really appreciate your time. My name is Bridget Poson. I'm the Executive Director of the Northern Nevada Chapter of the American Red Cross. And I'm here today to take just a few minutes to share with council and the folks attending the meeting about what we do, who we serve, and some of the programs and services we have to offer the city of Fernley. Do I click this? There we go. Perfect. Thank you. All right, so we are the Northern Nevada Chapter of the American Red Cross. We're a part of the Utah Nevada region. So within Utah, Nevada, we have five different chapters. And our Northern Nevada Chapter, as you can see, serves twelve counties, including Carson City. And we serve people facing emergencies every day. So we have staff, a number of volunteers in our chapter, and the generous donors of the American people help to fund our programs and our responses throughout Northern Nevada, as well as throughout the country. So what we do, we do a lot of things. And generally, when I ask folks, what do you think the American Red Cross does? It's usually, you know, you see us on TV responding to national disasters, things like that. But we do so much for our local communities here, as well as the country. We provide critical assistance and resources to U.S. military servicemen and women, veterans, and their families. I was out at the Fallon Naval Air Station today, meeting with the captain, offering our programs to those folks and their families. So we really appreciate members of the military and our veterans who served our country. We teach about international humanitarian law. So we teach community members, as well as we have several youth Red Cross Clubs in Reno mostly. But this could definitely be something extended to schools here in Fernley. And we do lots of education around that. And those youth also serve the community in various ways. We work with a lot of different community partners, so schools, emergency managers, fire departments, other businesses and organizations. And we would love to work more so with the city of Fernley, hear about your community's needs and how we might be able to assist with that. And we provide relief and recovery support to households impacted by disasters. So far this year, and this number is probably up from a hundred and twenty eight. But we work with local fire departments. And if folks who have experienced a home fire would like assistance from the Red Cross, we ask that fire departments give the number one eight hundred Red Cross to those folks to reach out and our disaster action team responds and helps to assess the damage. We give a little bit of financial assistance, but we really help those folks who are experiencing a pretty bad day. We provide resources for the next steps towards recovery. And we do life-saving skills, so CPR, first aid, babysitting classes, water safety, and other life-saving skills. And just this summer alone, we've opened five evacuation centers due to wildfires or apartment fires in Northern Nevada. And if an evacuation were to be extended for more than a few hours or through the night, we also would open an overnight shelter for folks displaced by a fire. And another neat thing about our folks in Northern Nevada is we've got trained volunteers and staff who go out to those national disasters and deploy for up to two to three weeks at a time to help folks out in other parts of the country who are experiencing large disasters and more. So who we are, we only have five paid staff in Northern Nevada, myself and four other folks. So we're a ninety percent volunteer workforce. So we are looking for more volunteers. We're looking for board members to help serve our communities better, build resiliency, get them prepared for disasters, to be able to help each other. Really neighbors helping neighbors kind of organization. Where we can all work together with the community to make sure that we're safe and we're prepared for whatever comes. And I wanted to share a few of our preparedness programs that are taught by national presenters to help participants prepare, understand, and respond appropriately to emergencies and disasters. We're trying to present at different schools. So we do a K through two and a three, third through fifth grade youth preparedness presentation in different, different schools. We have a program called Be Red Cross Ready, which is all about disaster preparedness, building a kit, an evacuation kit, being prepared before disaster strikes, making a plan with your family to make sure that you stay safe if you were to be evacuated or had to shelter in place, and then staying informed. So we have a Red Cross Emergency App that will help folks be informed about different natural disasters. We do offer, besides our certification programs, we also offer a short hands-only CPR training where folks can learn how to check for consciousness, call nine one one, and give continuous chest compressions. That's a quick one, but folks educated in a hands-only CPR class could definitely save a life. And that's what we want to express to the city. One of my favorite programs that we have is the Home Fire Campaign. So we have a phone number here. You can call this phone number and our volunteers will schedule an appointment with you, come out to your home and install free ten-year smoke alarms, and also help you make a plan, an evacuation plan, if you were to have a home fire. That's a good one. That's a great program. And Ready Rating is a program for businesses and schools and different organizations to help with business continuity. So we have a short assessment on readyrating.org, our website. And businesses can take that assessment and help build an emergency action plan to make sure that they are prepared for a, an emergency and get back to serving the community and running their business as soon as possible. Here's my contact information here. And I'm happy to follow up, answer any questions. I'd love to hear the needs of the community and have, continue that conversation to see how Red Cross can help Fernley with, with things that we can help you with. And that's all I've got. Are there any questions from the council?
And that's a great presentation. And I've seen this at the Chamber breakfast. It's always good to have this presentation out to the public. So anyways, we have, first of all, Councilman Mendoza, and then Councilwoman Zabrowski.
Hi, thank you for your presentation. In regards to the smoke alarms, I remember one year we teamed up with you at the fire department to walk the communities that were potentially needed the smoke detectors. And we found a lot of them. Is there a way we could set something like that up? And then also get this information out on our website so people can call? Because we're coming into that season where we should be checking our smoke alarm batteries and things like that.
Yes.
We go into homes all the time where they chirp because they're bad and they're old and they're out of date. And they just remove the batteries and there's no smoke alarms.
Yep, we would love to, to talk more about that. Yeah, about doing another project like that. It's something that we can, we can help with.
Okay, perfect. I'll give you a call. We'll set something up.
Great.
Thank you, Councilman Mendoza. Great questions. Councilwoman Zabrowski.
Thank you for your presentation. I guess I'm just kind of curious how we kind of get started to bring in more participation or pairing up with you guys or with the schools. Do you guys reach out to the schools? Do we reach out to the schools?
I would love some help with that. I've visited a few of the elementary schools. I'm just, I'm trying to connect with the right person. So any assistance that, that we can get with that, that would be amazing.
I think I'm happy to help with that. So I'll keep your contact information. And I think also maybe pairing up with our deputy city manager, just because we did just build our CRC, which is also supposed to double as an emergency evacuation place. But I'm not sure what that evacuation looks like, depending on the area of the city, how we get those people to the CRC, or, or how that looks. And I guess I am just curious if there's any way that you can shoot us as a council an email, I need help with, dot, 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 dot. That way we can start kind of checking off that, off that list. And then do you guys also participate with like nonprofits? So like search and rescue, or, or Rotary, or Lions Club? Or some of those are, are biggest organizations? And I feel like they can really help spread the word as well. That's probably, we can probably find some good board members that are part of those nonprofits that are interested in, in the Red Cross.
Thank you. Yeah, I joined the chamber. So starting there, but I like that. Those ideas are really helpful. Thank you.
That's, a lot of the chamber members too are, I mean, there's a plethora of networking that happens in the chambers. So it's great that you joined. I'm sure you'll, you'll find a lot of help there.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, thank you very much. At this time, we're going to take a five-minute break. Back up on the dice, please. We'll get this meeting started. All right, we are now on line item six. Six point one, discussion possible action regarding the character alleged misconduct and professional competence of Councilman Stan Lyle. Possible action may include, but not limited to censor, removal from committee assignments, or expulsion of Councilman Lyle pursuant to NRS two sixty six point two four zero. And providing direction to staff regarding next steps. This request was by Councilman Mendoza. Councilman Mendoza, you have the floor.
Thank you. I would like to begin by apologizing to the community for the lack of response from the city and its leadership regarding the recent arrests and outbursts of Councilman Stan Lyle. With a day of learning, within a day of learning about the last event, while I was away on vacation, I sent an email to our city attorney requesting guidance on what actions we, as city leadership, could take to address this matter. In return, we received what I believe was a hastily prepared and incomplete legal brief with little time before a regular scheduled meeting at five P.M. We were forced to move on without follow-up to date. No further response has been provided to my inquiry. And our mayor has also failed to address this issue publicly. In my opinion, the outbursts and the serious allegations concerning Councilman Lyle are wholly unacceptable for anyone entrusted with public office. This evening, before I go on further with my Uh, this evening, before I go on further with my discussion, I'm asking Councilman Lau to take responsibility for his actions and voluntarily resign from his position. Are you willing to do that this evening, Councilman Lau?
No, I'm not.
So speaking as someone who has made mistakes in the past, I understand the importance of accountability, growth and change. When I was nineteen, I made a choices that I had to answer for, and I accepted those consequences over the twenty years. After that, I have worked hard to turn those lessons into life of service, accountability and leadership. My past does not define me. It shapes me. And to the man that I am today, the father that I am, the business owner and a public servant. This is what accountability looks like. I could only hope Councilman Councilman Lau will recognize his own need to take responsibility. And seek the help he needs. Uh, to be clear, the actions of Councilman Lau do not represent, nor do they reflect the standards or values of our community. Our community deserves leaders who act with integrity today and not excuses about yesterday. I will continue to stand for accountability, transparency and values that reflect the very best of our city. I'm ready to make a motion after this discussion.
Sorry. All right. Is there any further discussion on this matter? Councilman Hannan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I want to clarify a few things before we begin, uh, or I should say before I begin. Um, first thing I want to clarify is that um when I became aware of this motion uh, that was presented to be put on the agenda. Um, I made several attempts to contact Mr. Mendoza to have a discussion regarding this. Um, there's been a lot of information, I should, a lot of rumors flying around about what apparently happened. I haven't seen any evidence. I haven't seen anything presented to show that anyone up here is guilty of anything. I've heard accusations. I don't have a police report. I don't have witness statements. Uh, Mr. Lau, Councilman Lau was here two days after this alleged incident occurred. And we saw no marks on Mr. Lau, Councilman Lau. Uh, the indication from the Sheriff's Department um statement was that they responded and there were some accusations that were made. They were not able to substantiate through evidence that all of the things that were alleged to have occurred had occurred. And then an individual forced or requested um a citizen's arrest. And so tonight I'm a little frustrated because I I made a good faith effort. I reached out to you, Councilman Mendoza. And I asked you um that I was going to put something on the agenda that I would be willing to pull if you would will be willing to have a conversation. This is again, a situation by which we just went through. We just removed a or accepted the resignation of our city uh manager at a cost of almost a half a million dollars to the city of Fernley. We did this under what I think are false allegations. There were allegations that were brought up over he did something, but we never we never heard what he did. There was no evidence presented. And so here we are again in sort of the same premise. This is very hard for me to do this. I'm doing this because my heart is telling me this is wrong. Councilman Lau has the right to due process. Councilman Lau is not allowed to speak. I I believe he has a statement. I don't know if he's going to read it, but my understanding is that um he has a right to remain silent. He has a Fifth Amendment right. We've been told that anything that he says in this proceeding to defend himself can be used against him and will be used against him. Due process is that we don't take action arbitrarily because we heard rumors. None of us were there. There was only one person in this room that that I believe up here that was there, and that was Councilman Lau. Councilman Lau has a right to present evidence in his defense. In a criminal proceeding, he has a right to remain silent. He has a right to a fair trial. He has a lot of rights, due process. In this country, we don't uh, a lot of folks here are constitutionalists. They tell me, you know, our constitution is important. It means a lot. And and I I agree with that. Um, our constitution and the laws of the land and due process dictate that you're innocent until you are proven guilty. I've asked some of the folks up here to wait and let that process um transpire. Um, like I said, I'm not here to defend Councilman Lau or the actions of Councilman Lau. I am here to 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 defend his constitutional rights to the presumption of innocence until facts are presented that that uh that prove that beyond a reasonable doubt that he is guilty. Um, I ask you, Councilman uh Mendoza, do you have a copy of the police report with you tonight?
I do not.
Do you have witness statements um that would prove that an allegation this allegation occurred?
I do not have any statements in regards to his arrest, but we do have public recorded meetings on his outburst at council as well.
Okay, I'm not here to defend an outburst in the public. Uh, Councilman Lau has to stand on the merits of what uh he did up here, and I'm not excusing that. What I'm asking you is do you have any evidence that anything occurred uh that in reference to the arrest of Councilman Lau? He was on shadow. There was an incident. What's that?
For the second time, I do not.
You do not. So so my 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 big problem is that when I read this item, it says up to removal. So you're you're basically putting out to the public. And so I sort of feel, you know, we've got to give him the benefit of the doubt. He has a constitutional right to go through that process. Who are we, a legislative body? We're not, we're not judges. This isn't, this isn't a courtroom. This is a um a council chamber. And so I hold heavy making any decision and pointing a finger at somebody. And the reason that the reason that I added an item to your agenda, and if you look at what I submitted, it was in rebuttal testimony in case something like this happened. Uh, you yourself had an unfortunate incident. Um, nobody put your name on uh an agenda and brought it before you went to court or you had the right to defend yourself. And I would expect that you would give Councilman Lau the same courtesy. It's the American thing to do. We are innocent until proven guilty, and you were awarded that same thing.
I would ask that we keep our discussion about me and the a proper item agendas for six point two and concentrate on Lau.
The item that we're discussing is is both. Uh, you've been noticed that we can discuss this item six.
Hold on a minute. Counsel?
I believe the mayor only called the first item, so that would be up to the parliamentarian, Mr. Mayor, to make that decision.
So at this point, let let uh uh I would like to see this um stay within six point one. And this is about uh Councilman Lau. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I finish? Take me a couple of seconds here. I just want to repeat um Councilman Lau has a right to due process. Councilman Lau has not been found guilty of anything. There has been no evidence presented to this body. And this body is not willing to have a conversation outside of this room in discussion to present evidence or to show uh any bad faith on Councilman Lau's part. Uh, once again, Councilman Lau has to stand on the merits of his actions. If Councilman Lau goes through that court proceeding and he is found to be guilty, I've already expressed that I am a hundred percent on board for whatever this body feels is necessary. But at this time, um, I think that that arrest should not be part of this discussion, nor should it be part of something we're considering since there has been no evidence presented. Thank you.
Right. Thank you. Oh, Councilman Torres.
So my understanding from the agenda item is this is supposed to um because due process has not been completed with the other incident in the public. Um, that this item is about the um violent outburst during an April budget hearing and a violent outburst regarding a May budget hearing made by uh the councilman. So with that understanding, um, it was both of those um events happened in public during a public council meeting with um all the departments here as witnesses, with all of council that is here um subject to that. It's also recorded audio and it's recorded by video. And to those two actions, um yes, without going into detail, um per our attorney, the written report on those investigations is still pending. However, um, with those recordings being part of public record, um, I believe that we can make a decision on those two items um and totally not involve anything happening with the councilman and uh the gentleman from the public.
Mi- Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, oh, uh, it did brand, did Ms. Jensen also, did she also say something or is it just me? There's a little bit of echo where I am sitting here, so I just don't want to step on anybody's toes.
So this is uh Rebecca from Poole Pack. Uh, if you would, please state your name and who you are when you're talking. Thank you.
I will. Yeah, thank you. So Rebecca Brew, uh, I am your Poole Pact attorney. Uh, I have been assigned to oversee certain matters, uh, including the investigations related to the um, the the uh topic that uh Councilman Torres brought up. I would just caution you that those are uh those investigations are not complete, that there is an outside uh neutral investigator who uh uh is um conducting them, I'm overseeing, and that they need to remain confidential and not discussed um, not discussed uh at this point in time.
Uh, Ms. Brewer, can you uh discuss when the investigation is going to be complete?
It's my understanding, um, it's my understanding that there are a couple of more interviews to be done. Um, yeah, there are a couple of you now. There's more than one investigation that's going on, and so I don't want to confuse them, but I know that there are scheduled still a few more interviews with some of you all, and I don't remember. I can't tell you right now who, but I think that uh I I got a status update from the investigator. And it looks like uh, you know, he's 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 working on this and that is um, it's not done yet, but that it is close to being done. He he need, he needed to finish the these interviews before he could write his report.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilman Hannan, did you have your lights on?
I did, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Um, this is precisely what I'm what I'm referencing is this jump to convict. We we don't have the evidence. We don't have the information we need. This is why I reached out and asked for a conversation that I apparently am not uh entitled to, and that's fine. Um, you know, it it is what it is. We don't always have to get along. We don't always have to agree, and that's fine. And that's part of what we're doing up here. That's part of what makes this body great is that we don't always agree and we don't always uh, we have a lot of different ideas. But these things have to take place. There there needs to be um due process for the criminal side and and any other investigations need to be completed so that we have the appropriate information to move forward with a decision. Anything we do now is in haste. We're making decisions uh, these shoestring decisions based on nothing. Um, I would like to say in regards to the uh Ms. Brewer, am I allowed to discuss the the occurrences, the outbursts?
Uh, you you mean the ones that are under investigation?
Yeah, the ones that were referenced.
Well, n- nothing more than you you cannot discuss anything other than what is a public record, but because there have been there, because there are the reports haven't been prepared with conclusions. Um, I would, you know, it it
Can I just, can I discuss what I what I witnessed up here?
Well, has um, has Councilman Lau been noticed about a discussion about that in public? Because I don't believe he has.
Councilman Lau has been notified that they're going to talk about his character and competence, yes.
But but on what topics? Because those NRS two forty one notices are very specific. And so you can't go beyond the bounds of whatever notice is, and I uh, so I don't know the specifics of what the notice was related to the events that are currently, the criminal events that are currently pending. So if he's been noticed about a discussion about his character competence related to those events that happened in April, then I then you cannot discuss those without properly notifying him.
Okay, so according to the agenda, it says uh actions regarding character alleged misconduct.
Right.
And professional competence. So what do you take that as?
Well, so then there uh and I, as I say, I don't have the notice in front of me. I don't know. I don't know if Ms. Jensen does, but um I I it depends on, so there has to be language in there that gives some specificity to it. Uh, you can't just say character competence uh conduct without the the idea is to give the person the uh ability to prepare to respond i- in the public forum. So does he, the question is, um, does he have the information that he needs? Has he been noticed that that may be discussed at this meeting?
Ms. Jensen?
According to the notice, the list of topics that were provided to Mr. Lau is discussion and possible action relating to the following. Discussion and possible action regarding the character alleged misconduct and professional competence of Councilman Stown Lau. Possible actions may include, but are not limited to, censure, removal from committee assignments or possible expulsion of Councilman Lau pursuant to NRS two sixty six two forty and providing directions to staff regarding next steps due to the following conduct during the council, city council budget meeting held on April third, twenty twenty five. Lion County Sheriff's Office case number, a a second item is Lion County Sheriff's Office case number twenty five L Y zero three two four five.
Okay, so um so there is at least a mention there uh that that this discussion may also, it is also um could include that the conduct at those meetings.
Thank you. Answer my question. So if I may continue, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Continue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is very difficult. This is very embarrassing. This is, this is probably the worst thing that I've done. And and I'm doing what my heart tells me to do, and I'm standing up for somebody. I'm not defending his his actions. I'm defending his rights. And I'm defending what's right. And we don't have evidence here today. We do have an an incident that occurred up here. Councilman Lau was extremely passionate. I would be cautioned to use the word violent when you yell out something. Maybe that's based on an individual. But what what happened up here, my my what I saw was a person who was given the floor to talk, and then somebody talked over him, and then somebody else talked over him. And there was no mediation or control. There's a rule of decorum here by which now I have the floor. I am able to speak. People are not allowed to speak over me. And so I've seen this happen over and over and over again, where people are spoken over, people turn on a mic. People that are on Zoom start talking and then when they're not called. I'm not excusing it, but I'm saying it's extremely frustrating. Sometimes I I'm up here and I'm so frustrated, I my button is on and no one's calling me, and we move on to another topic and I have to interrupt. It's it's frustrating because we're all up here trying to do the right thing. But I stress that these processes need to go through the proper format. He has the right to due process before we come up here and make a decision. And I'm asking the council to please consider that and to move this item to a future date. Thank you.
Councilman Torres.
You would you would caution threatening me and telling me to go outside and go to the parking lot as not violent? What would that be called?
I I um, but
Mr. Mayor, can I?
If we could keep it professional and respectful, thank you.
Can I respond to that, Mr. Mayor?
I believe that that was very professional, Mr. Mayor. That is by definition, a violent act towards another person in the performance of their duty as a public official. If I came up to you and did that, I know that you would consider that violent. Because it's a violent act. And we base these definitions not only by statute, but also by just common knowledge of what the norm is for the society. Everybody in this room would say that that's a violent act. So for you trying to go from left field and justify these actions, when you were here, you were sitting here and you want evidence to the fact, I'm 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 just shocked and appalled that again, more excuses instead of holding people accountable. Um, and 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 I mean, we we've seen it. This is why these people are here today. No action has been taken by the city. We have a a Poole Pact attorney who is not prepared with anything, which is very evident by her presentation. She doesn't even know where we're at in the process. Um, and and we're we're like the city has a statutorily and by city code duty to protect its employees, which includes council and its citizens from violent acts in the workplace. And they have not done that, and you're sitting here making excuses for these actions.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Hannan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Torres, with all due respect, uh, I went back and watched that meeting. I was sitting right here. Um, that it didn't necessarily happen that way. that meeting. I was sitting right here. That it didn't necessarily happen that way, and I would encourage everyone to go back and watch it, because what happened was, Councilman Lau was speaking. I believe Councilwoman Zaberski had a question and interrupted. There was some back and forth. Then I believe Councilman Torres turned on his mic and 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 interrupted. Councilman Lau made some comments, and then Councilman Torres yelled back at him. And so it's not an innocent. I was sitting there, and I was attacked. He yelled at you, you yelled back at him. That's what's on the video. Okay, well, I would I would encourage, if we're going to do this, and you want to do it fairly, play the video, be prepared with the video, play it, and show the folks.
Councilman Hannon has a floor. Councilman Torres.
Thank you. This is exactly what I'm talking about. I'm not lying. It's on video, and we discussed this. We've been told that these items are not to be used, that there is an investigation that we're not supposed to talk about, and that those things need to take place. We've jumped a gun to do this. We've not prepared. There's a lot of allegations being made here today. I haven't seen any proof. If it's so clear cut, then play the video. That's what I would ask. Thank you.
Councilwoman Zaberski.
Well, I was also at those meetings, but it was two separate meetings, and I'm hoping that you're not mixing them together. I think what I'm really curious about is what generally is the process when something like this happens on a board, on on any kind of leadership board? Because it feels like something that we're revisiting again, where it has snowballed now, when it's something that could have happened very easily with a public statement from the city, just reassuring our citizens that, hey, we know that this happened, this is what we're doing, we don't condone this behavior, we don't want to set this example for, you know, the youth or or anybody in our community. I just I feel like a lot of this, and especially this, this battle could have been avoided with a statement from our mayor, or or anything that said, we're aware that this is happening, because you have to understand how it looks on us as a council, that we're just pushing something under the rug, you know, when we have people contacting us, well, what are you guys doing? Or or why is he still there? And 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 not aware of, you know, the process it has to go through, but but also not not saying anything says a lot.
Okay, thank you for your comments, Councilwoman Zaberski, but seems how you brought me into this, there's only one statement that I want to make, is that the fact that the next meeting we had up here, if I do recall correctly, Councilman Torres and Councilman Lau got up publicly apologized to Councilman Torres, right back behind me and shook hands. That, to me, I thought that was that was pretty much saying that he was wrong, he knows he's wrong, he apologized. Do I still think it's right? Absolutely not. Shouldn't have never happened. Another thing that can happen, too, is is what I did was that when that happened, I did call for a recess, and then I did ask Councilman Lau to leave the meeting. So, yes, I guess I could have made a I could have made a statement, but with the investigations and everything that was going on, I made no attempt to make to make a comment on what had happened because of the investigation. Councilman, let's see, Mendoza.
Yeah, I'm ready to make my motion if discussion is over.
Oh, hold on a minute. We still have Councilwoman Zaberski. Go ahead.
Sorry, I still have a couple of questions.
Okay, go ahead.
I am confused as far as pool pack goes. If the video is public record, and anybody can pull it up, I'm not sure why that's not something we would be allowed to discuss. And it's really hard. Some of our agenda items, when they come out, you have to almost decipher if it's if it's for that, because I could say, okay, well, the videos are alleged misconduct or professional competence, but it seems like that's kind of subjective. And I really don't understand that about how our NRS is, because that does not seem like black and white law. He was noticed about this. If you, you know what I mean? It just I'm I'm a little bit confused about that, how the video would not be something that we can discuss when when anybody can go and pull it up on their phone right away. So I'm I'm kind of curious about that, if if legal or whole package.
Ms. Brewer, if I'm not mistaken, the reason we're not able to talk about it is because it is under investigation. Is that correct?
Correct. There there an investigation that has not been completed, and no conclusions have been reached. You know, my my job, we I have advised you, you know, on various matters related to these things along the way. And my job is to give you that advice, and you all make the decisions that you want to make. As I said, that is a public record. The video is a public record. And in my opinion, if you wanted to pull it up, I guess, and talk about it, then you I think you can do that. Now, you know, what I think is, I give you the best advice I can, and I'm not sure, Councilman Torres, if he if there's something that I haven't, some question I haven't answered, then please let me know, because that's not my intent. And I was very prepared for tonight, and I've been involved in the weeds on this since the beginning. So I apologize if there's something that you don't know that, you know, you'd like to know. But as far as that, this is all very, there's nothing black and white about any of these issues and how to handle them. There are different approaches, different different interpretations of the law. I and I have no magic ball to tell you how a judge would rule. If you all made a certain decision, I give you my my best opinion based on my experience and what I know. So that's what so I stand by what I said. There's no reason why you couldn't pull up a public record and discuss it if you want to discuss it. Those the confidentiality of those current pending investigations is my advice to you in order to make sure that everybody, everybody's due process rights are protected. Those those investigations were put in place based on allegations that were reported to your insurance company by members, and and I stepped in to help respond properly. When someone makes a complaint, whether it's an elected official or it's an employee, you have obligations to do an investigation. And so I my, you know, my goal is to protect the integrity of those investigations. And and so whatever decisions you make ultimately are defensible. And and that's, you know, so that and that's what I'm trying to do.
All right, thank you. Councilman Hannon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also take issue, and one of the reasons why I'm so upset about this is because we had ample opportunities to bring any of these items from May and June. We could have simply put it on the agenda and censured censured Councilman Lau. We could have made our our statement, but that wasn't done. And so that's why I'm upset is because what we've done is we've allowed this to happen, allegedly, and then there's another incident, and we're trying to group it all together. We're trying to use that to slam dunk the rest of it. And we have a policy in this building that when an employee has an issue, we reach out to that employee right away. We don't wait for three or four slam dunks and then fire them. We can't do that. And so we have to treat everyone the same. And we're no different. We're employees of the city as well. And when somebody up here does something that is not professional or inappropriate, it's incumbent upon the city to address that item at that time, not store three or four things, and then come in here and blast this guy, put him all over the news, and make a mockery of this with no evidence. I haven't seen one piece of evidence. We have evidence that's available. I haven't seen any of it presented. No video, no photos, no police report, no witness statements, no witnesses, nothing. I would like this process to continue the proper way, and we'll make a decision, I believe, when we have the information that we need. Thank you.
Councilman Mendoza.
Is everybody done?
Are we done with comment? You can make the motion, and after the motion, if there's a second, I will ask for future comment, any any further comments, and then we'll vote.
I just want to ask Councilmen Stan Lau and give him another opportunity to resign publicly voluntarily. This is what the community has asked for. It's been all over social media, and I believe some of these people here in attendance would appreciate you taking responsibility for your actions and resigning on your own. Before I make that motion, I want to extend that one more time to you, sir.
Councilman Lau?
I know.
With that being said, my motion is going to be read in a resolution of a censor for the city of Fernley in Nevada. Censor of Councilman Stan Lau, whereas members of the city council are elected to represent the community with integrity, professionalism, and respect, and whereas the conduct of Councilman Stan Lau, including his recent arrest, repeated outbursts during public meetings, has reflected poorly on the city of Fernley and undermined the trust and confidence of its citizens, and whereas such conduct constitutes behavior on becoming of a council member, damages the credibility of the governing body, and misrepresents both the city and the residents from the council he has sworn to serve, and whereas it is the duty of the Fernley City Council to hold itself accountable and to ensure that individual actions do not compromise the dignity, safety, reputation of the city or its community members. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Fernley Council does hereby censure Councilman Stan Lau for conduct on becoming of a council member, and be it further resolved that Councilman Stan Lau is hereby removed from all committee assignments as directed to refrain from any behavior that misrepresents, discredits, or otherwise harms the city of Fernley, its residents, or the integrity of this council. Be it finally resolved that this council, in passing this resolution, affirms its commitment to accountability, transparency, and the upholding of the highest standard of the conduct and service to the citizens of Fernley.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Councilman Mendoza, seconded by Councilman Torres. Is there any further discussion on this? Councilwoman Zaberski?
I have looked this up so many different ways today, and I guess if you could just give me like the definition of a censure, like, what does that mean? Is that you're suspended? Or can you just give me like the full definition of what it means to be censured, and what that looks like going forward, so that I fully understand? And I'm sure a lot of our community members know exactly what it is, but I I would like full understanding.
So a public
I got it. I got it. Ms. Jensen, would you please give a definition of a censor censor?
Certainly, for clarification of procedure, probably 10 years ago, rules of decorum and procedure were adopted by a previous council that allows for the council members to adopt policies to discipline their own members through various actions. One of those is through a censure. A censure is the equivalent of either a public verbal or written reprimand that is placed into the record and is a public record from that point forward. That is all it is, is basically this equivalent of an employee's reprimand.
Okay.
Hold on. So also with that, the motion included removal of all committees that he is assigned to, and I do have a list of those committees. So we'll see how this plays out, and then I'll list those committees for the record.
Okay.
Councilwoman Zaberski, go ahead.
It's a public reprimand, and then nothing comes from that. It's just it's just written into history. You've been censured, you've been reprimanded, and then go on.
Based on the motion presented, yes.
Thank you.
So if there oh, that's my light. So if there's no further discussion on this matter, please vote.
I got to make a disclosure.
There's there's no public comment on this matter. Thank you. Hey, we're asking I'm asking for order here, please. This is not a a public hearing. This is with the council. It's a discussion, possible action regarding Councilman Lau. This is not a public input at this time. So thank you.
I have to make a disclosure. Mr. Mayor, NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose a potential conflict of interest. This matter before the body is related to my private capacity and city capacity. I have professional and peculinary interest in this matter. I believe that this these would affect the independence of judgment of a reasonable person in my situation. In order to avoid the appearance of any impropriety, I am abstaining from voting in this matter.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Mendoza.
I'd just like to reiterate to the citizens in the audience that are asking for public comment that there will be a time at the end of the meeting for public comment and for you guys to share that.
Yes, that is correct. So at the end of the meeting, we always close with public comment. That would be your your chance to voice your opinion on this matter. So thank you very much for that. If there's no further comment, please vote with. Motion carries three, one with one abstention. We will now move on to
point of order.
Go ahead.
Ms. Jensen, I'd like to raise a point, point of order regarding the item we just voted on. On August 18, 2025, Councilman Ryan Hannon personally used a credit card to post bail on the amount of $2,240 on behalf of Councilman Stan Lau. Given this direct financial involvement, I respectfully ask that the Councilman Hannon should have refused himself recused himself from deliberation or voting on the item, as his financial ties to Councilman Lau are directly connected to the subject matter before us tonight. I request clarification.
Council, Ms. Jensen?
That's a question for Ms. Brew.
Ms. Brew, do you have a comment on that, please?
So your concern is that he did not disclose and recuse? Is that your your question, Councilman Mendoza?
I'll read it again to you.
Thank you.
On August 18, 2025, Councilman Ryan Hannon personally used a credit card to post bail in the amount of $2,240 on behalf of Councilman Stan Lau. Given this direct financial involvement, I respectfully ask whether Councilman Hannon should have recused himself from deliberation or voting on item 6.1, as his financial ties to Councilman Lau are directly connected to the subject matter before us tonight. Essentially, what I'm asking is for clarification from you as our legal counsel, whether or not this constitutes a conflict of interest or an ethical violation under applicable law, policy, or council rules.
So thank you for repeating that. In my opinion, that I am not the ethics commission, so if an ethics complaint is brought against Councilman Hannon, then that would be a determination made by that commission.
So for clarification, so in order, so
It was just the point of point of order. I'll submit my email from the Lyon County Sheriff's Office confirming that Ryan Hannon bailed Stan Lau on 18, the 18th of August for the amount of $2,240 by a credit card. I will get you that information again to submit into the record.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Mendoza. We will now move on to line item 6.2, discussion regarding the character, alleged misconduct, and professional competence of Councilman Joe Mendoza and case MA 0 MA 030119-01, APT MA 303119-01 as requested by Councilman Hannan. Councilman Hannan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In regards to this, I already addressed it. Um, and in my council agenda item request, it was possible rebuttal evidence and discussion on Council Mendoza and the case number referenced, and I have nothing further.
Councilman Mendoza?
Yeah, I just want to bring to light and make it um, public knowledge and also be submitting this evidence into uh, the record this evening. And I did bring 10 copies since I have a lot of evidence for this. But I want to bring it up to light the communications that Councilman Ryan Hannan did bring up. Quote, his text to me was, I've added something to the agenda that can be pulled by 5:00 PM. I'd like to discuss this with you. Time is of the essence. Uh, the only agenda item Councilman Hannan added was item 6.2, which specifically referenced my past when I was 19 years old, and I interpret this message as an attempt to pressure and intimidate me leveraging my past mistakes that I have never hidden from anybody in an effort to dissuade me from bringing forward my agenda requests regarding Councilman Lau. Let me state this clearly and publicly. I will not be intimidated not by Councilman, uh, Councilman Hannan, the mayor, or anybody on this council. My role as a council member is to stand for what is right and for what best serves our community. That is the oath I took and the commitment I will continue to uphold. I also respectfully ask Councilman Ryan Hannan to explain why there was an apparent willingness to have a discussion and potential potentially remove an agenda item after it has been submitted. Transparency, consistency, and fairness must guide our process if we are to maintain the trust of a community we serve. For full transparency, I'll be adding the communication Councilman Ryan Hannan sent to me into our official meeting minutes.
All right. So uh, there's no further discuss, oh, Councilman Hannan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I think I covered uh, why I did what I did and um, if we continue to have a lack of discussion up here and nobody wants to get along and talk, then we can't work together. And that's a big problem. And it happened with the city manager. I brought that up earlier. If if I want to reach out to you and ask you something, um, I expect that we can have that discussion, but you are not willing to have that discussion with me. So I'm left with no other o- option than to play the same game. If you want to put him on trial in here with no evidence and and make a mockery of this proceeding, then I think that you're not standing on the mountain of right. You're standing on the mountain of wrong. And I I hoped that a person that went through a trying experience and turned your life around would have compassion for somebody else and due process. And apparently that's not the case. Um, I don't believe my character competency was um, supposed to be discussed this night. I was not noticed. And uh, so I'll be following the appropriate complaints as well. Thank you.
Okay, um, at this time, there uh, uh, Ms. Jensen, I don't believe we need a vote on this, do we? It just says discussion regarding, so.
There were also some questions raised related to some of the prohibited home occupations. We've added a new prohibited home occupation list. The two businesses that were mentioned by the planning commission were adult businesses and cosmetology. The question was raised, you know, why are we using this term adult business? It's a very broad term, but the reason that we're using that term is because that is our codified definition. And so utilizing the same definition that's used elsewhere in the development code allows for consistency. And then the second business that was raised as a question was cosmetology. And the reason that we've chosen to exclude that as a home occupation is because the cosmetology board of Nevada has some very strict requirements that are not compatible with a home occupation use as a residential accessory use. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Counsel, have any questions? Councilwoman Zuberski?
Thank you for your presentation. I think the only question that I had about this was like in-home childcare. Because we do have some people that run in-home childcares and I don't know if that would be considered a home occupation. But I can imagine that a lot of the guidelines that are set out probably wouldn't fit like an in-home childcare.
That is a great question. Thank you. We are separately working on an update to our childcare use standards and allowances. And in-home childcare would be included under that definition rather than as a home occupation.
Okay, thank you.
Those, Councilman Lau?
I'm ready to make a motion.
We have to have public input at this time. Do we have any public input at this time? Anybody on Zoom? No? Okay. Oh, okay. Mr. Zimmerman, you're on speaker. Go ahead. I did have a question for you, Lisa, is that I know that David Zimmerman had called me. He has a business in Reno. And a lot of times he does his work in Reno, then he brings it home and people pick it up at his house. How does that play into this?
Could you clarify the type of activities that are actually conducted at the residence?
Pickup.
So?
So he does repairs and stuff. It is shop in Reno.
What types of repairs?
Small engine repair. Lawnmowers, weed blowers and different things as such. So how does that play into effect of where he repairs, he's in Reno, then he brings them home? And people that live out here in Fernley, instead of having to drive to Reno to pick it up, they go over to his house and pick it up. So he brings it home from Reno for them to pick up.
Sir, I can answer that. Kim Swanson for the record. If the business is not being done in Fernley, then he does not need a business license.
That is correct. And even if he were to obtain a home occupation business license, he would be allowed up to five client visits per day. And the type of repairs that you're asking about are not included on our prohibited list. We do prohibit auto and truck repair primarily because we want to prevent the proliferation of vehicles that are currently being worked on at the residence. Again, to ensure compatibility with neighboring properties. But something like that, that is essentially invisible to the neighbors and that still meets the standard of no more than five client visits per day would theoretically be permissible under the new code as well.
Okay. And Mr. Zimmerman, I hope you can hear us. If not, I will definitely call you tomorrow. You called me today this afternoon. I was really busy, so I'll get back to you.
Hi, City Council. I only caught the last end of this presentation. Not that I need to see it again because, as you know, I'm on the planning commission. But I just was curious if anything was said before the break ended because us on Zoom couldn't hear it.
I'm not sure the question.
Was anything said before the presentation?
Was there any? No, they had the presentation and then we had Councilwoman Zuberski had a question which was answered and then Dave Zimmerman was on Zoom and I hope I answered his question. And then you.
Okay, that's, that's all I needed and I appreciate the presentation. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion from Council or Councilman Mendoza? And then Councilman Lau?
I was just gonna bring up, it sounds like there was an issue with Zoom and that, make sure we could fix that, so. Before we move.
Ms. Carbon, was there, was there a problem with Zoom or you didn't have it on or what? I'm not really sure if there was.
Oh, no, I've been in the meeting this entire time and as soon as you wanted to go on a 10-minute break, your pool act attorney Rebecca Burrell actually was unmuted and had a call and she said, I'm giving up my license. I'm gonna go be a Walmart greeter after this. And then another call came.
Okay, I guess my question was, wasn't what you heard was, is Zoom working? And from what you're saying it does, so thank you very much.
Well, that's what I was wanting to know is because I didn't get, I was listening for the presentation and I didn't hear anything for the presentation other until the very, very end of it. And the last thing I heard before that was what I've just, what I just said.
Okay, thank you. If there's no further disc- Ms. Hawley, go ahead. Ms. Hawley, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Oh, there you go. Go ahead.
Okay, the first part of that last presentation was not on. Rebecca was on and then she went off and then nothing until towards the end of that presentation.
Yeah, we went, we had a 10-minute break after, after returning a mic call from Becky and then we had the presentation. Did you hear the presentation?
Not the whole presentation, no. But that's okay. I got enough of it. But we just, for those who didn't, it just wasn't on that whole time.
Thank you.
You're so welcome.
I started the camera, but I didn't start the audio.
Okay, that was our fault. We started the camera, but we did not start the audio.
No big deal.
Okay, thank, thank, thank you for saying that. Okay, so if there's no additional comment from staff, Councilman Lau?
I move to approve and adopt Bill 364.
There's somebody on Zoom.
What's that?
Leah Worthington on Zoom.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm not sure if this is the correct time, but I was wondering if we could have clarification because it does sound like that was your legal counsel that was unmuted on Zoom sharing pertinent information. And I was wondering how you would address that.
I guess you could file a complaint. I'm not really sure. I'll have to talk to council and find out what we're gonna, how we're gonna address this.
Okay, thank you.
And I just want you to know that that was not our deputy city attorney or our city attorney. That was Pool Pack Attorney representing the city of Fernley, okay?
Could you clarify for me what the difference is? I'm not quite sure what her role was here. Can you clarify what her role was?
Mr. Mayor, point of order. This is off topic.
Yes.
Yeah. Counsel, Ms. Jensen, how do I address this? It is off topic.
They can address their concerns to an email, but we do have to stay on the agenda topic.
So if you'd like, you can address your concerns with me at mayor@cityoffernley.org and I will email you back with a response.
Mr. Mayor, can you call on Mr. Zimmerman one more time, please?
Mr. Zimmerman, are you on?
Okay, I guess.
No? Okay. Councilman Lau?
I move to approve and adopt Bill 364 associated with CA 25003 amending the use standard for home occupations as proposed and presented by staff.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Lau, seconded by Councilman Hannon. Please vote. Ms. Swanson, your mic is still on, just so you know. Don't want you to say nothing. What a night. Motion carries 5-0. We'll now move on to line 7.2. Discussion possible action regarding Bill Number 362 associated with CA 25002 to revise Section 32.09.090I landscaping and screening of the City of Fernley Development Code to update the location design requirements and other specifications for trash enclosure, trash enclosures and update the screening requirements for mechanical and electrical equipment and facilities. Ms. Lisa.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. Lisa Warner, Assistant Planner for the Record. I always have trouble with this thing.
Is it on?
Okay, here we go. As far as the background on this code amendment, recent commercial projects have shown that the current requirements in the Fernley Development Code for trash enclosures and mechanical and electrical screening are vague and unclear. It was determined that more specific requirements should be added to the development code. These requirements will make it easier for staff to enforce the requirements, ensure consistent and compliant trash enclosures and mechanical and electrical equipment and facility screening throughout the city of Fernley. Planning Commission voted 6 to 1 on August 13th, 2025, to recommend City Council approve this code amendment. The primary discussion at Planning Commission was whether or not it would be cost prohibitive for small developers who were building one or two fourplexes versus larger apartment projects. As new requirements will be enforced on future development, no existing developments will be held to this new standard unless there are proposed improvements. So for proposed trash enclosures, we've added a location, a height, enclosure construction materials, gate construction materials, concrete floors with a service apron and spill containment systems for restaurants or similar uses. For proposed, proposed changes for mechanical and electrical, we've changed the screening height. We're requiring screening of ductwork, antennas and satellite discs. That was not required in our previous code. And then we're also changing that chain link fence can only be used in industrial zones only. And then according, when we did the first reading at Council a couple of weeks ago, Councilman Mendoza mentioned that he wanted to see something about the screening to meet manufacturer specifications to monitor airflow. So we went ahead and added that in. And as far as findings, a finding is a legal determination or conclusion based on the facts and evidence presented and prepared in support of a decision. And all findings required have been met. Finding number one, the code amendment is consistent with the city's master plan and is otherwise consistent with state and federal law. The master plan doesn't specifically address trash enclosures or mechanical screening. Therefore, the proposed code amendment doesn't violate anything in the master plan. And finding number two, that's our public noticing requirement. Public notices were completed in the newspaper and public hearings will be held at both the Planning Commission and they can be held tonight at City Council as well. And that's all I have. Are there any questions?
Councilman Mendoza?
Yeah, thank you guys for adjusting that. I do have one question. In regards to the trash cans and the containment requirement for restaurants, if we were utilizing the strip mall on Cottonwood, you know what I'm referring to? And we had a business lease of building there. Those requirements are not there, but the building is existing, but the restaurant's coming in. Are you guys gonna require the restaurants to upgrade the trash containment area? Because they're really not doing any upgrades to the structure or to the exterior portion of it? And it's existing. And so do we have language that's gonna clarify some of those things so that our business owners don't have to go through the loops to try to figure out and we kind of think about those things before we initiate that, that rule? So just for existing buildings essentially is what I'm asking for.
Right, so it's only for future developments, so future buildings, businesses, things that are being built. That if, if I'm understanding it correctly, that's a business that's going into a current
Structure.
Structure. So it wouldn't be included.
Okay, thank you.
I do believe that grandfathered is what she would say and so that's correct. Okay, thank you. Any other, Councilwoman Zuberski?
What was the no vote on the planning commission? What was the reason behind it?
The no vote was, he questioned, the requirement is that it's for more multifamily units. They have to have a trash enclosure. And one of the planning commissioners voted against that because they wanted to see, they thought that might be cost prohibitive for smaller developers. So that was the only reason for the no vote.
The only other question that I had is I read anti-graffiti material on there and I guess I'm just not sure what, I feel like anything could be painted and so I'm just curious what exactly that means.
I'll answer that one. Michelle, yes. Michelle Rambo, Planning Director, there are coatings, materials you can put on to the side of the walls to make it easier to either not stick if they do try it or to remove it if they do manage to graffiti it.
Like wash it or paint over?
It makes it easier to wash it off, basically, and you just, it comes right off when you put some soap and water on it.
Does the city use anti-graffiti materials?
I'm being told no by our public works directors.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Lau and then Councilman Mendoza?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Councilman Lau? I mean, Councilman Mendoza?
Yeah, I do have one question regards to satellite screening. Can you explain that a little bit more to me?
It's when they have like a satellite disc or something, maybe for TV, internet. We were asking that that be screened too, as well.
Once again, I'll interject a little bit here. Michelle Rambo, Planning Director, this is only for commercial and industrial. This is not for residential. So individual satellite dishes, like dish network are not required to be screened. But if you have a large satellite dish on your building or on your property, it needs, on your commercial or industrial property, then it would need to be behind a fence.
Okay, what if it's like, I mean, are we looking at, it's not multifamily?
No.
Okay, just commercial.
Just commercial and industrial.
And are we considering like the RV park on Main Street, commercial?
I'd probably consider that commercial. No, sorry, residential.
Residential?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I only ask because it's an actual business that is having people coming in and out, so that wouldn't affect RV parks.
No, I think that's, you know, that's people living in them, using it for personal use.
Yeah, and Yeah, and most of them are going in and out. So to have to put a screen up just for a week or something like that would be ridiculous. All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Hold on a minute. So we have public input. Do we have any public input on this matter? Nobody on Zoom? Nobody on Zoom? Nobody on the phone? Okay, I'll ask Council one more time. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing none, Councilman Lau?
I move to pass, approve, and adopt Bill 362 associated with CA 25002 as presented by staff.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Lau, seconded by Councilman Hannon. Please vote. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. We'll now move on to line item eight, ordinances, discussion possible action, first reading of Bill 368 regarding whether to allow delivery services to deliver alcohol beverages sealed by covered food establishment within the city limits. Ms. Swanson?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Kim Swanson for the record. So there was an assignment, number assigned error. So the bill to introduce tonight is number three sixty-nine. So if you decide to introduce, that's the bill number. So this is the introduction of Bill three sixty-nine, which is derived from AB three seventy-five that was enacted during the eighty-third legislative session. This bill is commonly referred to as the cocktails-to-go bill as it allows the off-premise delivery of alcoholic beverages. This law requires local jurisdictions to establish ordinances that permit certain food establishments, specifically restaurants, that are already licensed for on-premise alcohol sales to sell and deliver sealed alcoholic beverages for off-premise assumption, consumption. The bill permits third-party delivery services to manage alcohol deliveries on behalf of these restaurants. It is important to note that third-party delivery drivers must complete mandatory training prior to delivering the cocktails. Staff recommends that restriction be placed to just deliver cocktails to additional addresses, hotels, motels, and RV trailer parks to ensure responsible, responsible service. The implementation of this bill is anticipated to create a good, a new revenue stream for the twenty-two qualified restaurants within our city. It is ultimately the decision of the City Council to allow these cocktail-to-go deliveries. That's kind of fun to say, actually. So should this bill be introduced tonight, I will return on October first with the second reading and adoption of this bill. And I'm available for questions.
I have a question.
Yes.
What exactly do you consider concealed? Say I call the bar and I order, I don't drink, but if I called the bar and ordered a, I don't know what, a Shirley Temple. And so what do you consider sealed? I mean, a red solo cup with the lid on it, is that sealed?
So it's a
Because that could be an open container, right? Sheriff? Thumbs up.
Can you, did you hear that question? No? So, so, and that's why there is additional training for the third-party platform deliveries that are, are going to do this. So it'll, it is, it can be in like a bag that's sealed or a cup, like a Styrofoam cup with a cover that has an additional seal over it, like where you would put the straw. And then it's, it, it's sealed to where they can't, like the delivery driver knows or the delivery driver can't open it.
Well, they can't have a little drink on their way to deliver.
No, no. So, and I will do a more in-depth presentation on October first if it's approved.
Okay, we have a question from Councilman Torres and then a question from Councilman Hannon.
So I know it's first reading, but if we push it forward and approve it tonight, can we have it delivered like before the end of the meeting? Because it's been a lot, it's been a terrible meeting. Absolutely terrible.
I think we can find somebody to deliver to us, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Swanson.
Councilman Hannon?
I think this was kind of
Councilman Hannon and then Councilwoman Zaburski.
If I could second that, I would. My understanding is this is in reference to a state law, so the past that this sort of allows municipalities to do this, like cities and, and, and local governments.
Yes, that's correct.
But I think the, the better way that I interpreted this was if you were to order Mexican food from a restaurant in town and you wanted five Coronas, they put five Coronas in the bag and they deliver it. Is that more or less how this works? So they would be in bottles. I know there was some, I read some about the sealed container, but I think most folks would probably keep it inside the, the container that it came in, the vessel that it came in.
So they can deliver the five Coronas as well as margaritas. So then they will just seal the margarita in a pre-approved container and deliver that as well.
So I think what I kind of read, and maybe we can do this on the second reading, is, is more like the boba, when you go to get the boba tea and they put that plastic lid on top and they have a machine that sort of seals it on. That's what I understood this to, to read from the state. So I'm excited about this. Always good for the business to be able to make more money in Fernley. I think this is very lucrative for them and I look forward to the second reading. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Zaburski?
I tried really hard to find like pros and cons, just because I was legitimately curious. Like, does it cut down on DUIs? Does it cut down on crashes? Does it increase alcoholism? I'm genuinely curious. But I do really like the, there's an extra fifty cents surcharge that's added to every drink order that goes towards DUI prevention and education as far as alcohol goes. So it's kind of, it's a little bit of an oxymoron that we're, we're going to take the money for delivering you alcohol, but then also tell people why they shouldn't drink. So, but I, I think that's a really positive part of this is the, the extra surcharge that goes towards DUI prevention and education.
And that goes to the state.
Okay, so no public input? Oh, there is no public input on this. I'm sorry. So looking for a motion.
Just to introduce.
First reading, no motion. Never mind. All right.
Good.
I see no, no further questions. So we'll move on to
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to line item nine, staff reports, nine point one, discussion possible action to revise the offer letter from the city clerk. Ms. Swanson?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, Kim Swanson for the record. So tonight I am formally requesting to add a six-month severance agreement to my offer letter should the mayor, city council, mayor or city council decide to terminate me as city clerk. I sincerely hope that that would not, that situation would not arise. But I believe that this agreement would provide me with the necessary sense of job security, given my status as an, as an appointed employee. Having served the City of Fernley, as your city clerk, city clerk for thirteen years, I am committed to continuing in this role for several more years. I take great pride in my work and the work relationship that I have with each one of you. And I'm available for questions.
Councilman Torres?
I don't have a question. I was going to make a motion.
Thank you.
If there's no further questions, Councilman Mendoza?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for everything you do. Even when you're off, you make yourself available. And so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Torres, go ahead.
I move to approve the update to the city clerk's offer letter. And thank you.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Councilman Torres, seconded by Councilman Mendoza. If there's no further discussion, seeing none, please vote. Motion carries five zero. Moving on to line item nine point two, discussion possible action to approve a reclassification of administrative specialist to, to utilities project coordinator. Mr. Kim?
Greetings, council members, mayor, and acting city manager. My name is Sun Kim, utility director for the record. Utilities department hired an administrative specialist too about five months ago. Since she or the person started her job, she was immediately dragged into a job which is aware above and beyond her normal admin assistant duress, mainly due to overwhelming need to help the engineering project management level of work. So we recommend the changing this administrative specialist to position to project coordinator position to reflect the quality, quantity, and the level of work she must carry out.
Do you have it turned on?
Yeah, I did. Touch more. Okay, that's okay. I can hopefully look at. This new classification is distinguished from administrative specialists series by the performance of more complex and higher task and duress. Some examples of the project coordinator include assist in preparing city council agendas and agenda materials and staff reports for review. Also perform research using GIS maps, permit records, or digital files to support requests. Also, this position will help prepare and distribute RF fees and collect submissions for processing. Also, this position will help assist with entering invoices into financial tracking systems. This version will provide responses to inquiries from contractors, residents, or staff regarding general utility project permit status or RF, RF page. Currently, more than half of her time is devoted to this engineering project management related work. This is not to request an additional position, but to expand the job requirements to accommodate the demand. Thank you. Any questions?
Councilman Torres and then, yeah, Councilman Torres.
So who's, I guess my, my biggest question is how long has the person that is in this position been in this position?
Five months.
So what would change after five months? I mean, she's not even, he or she, I don't know who it is.
Yeah.
Are they even off probation yet?
She, yeah, she, she passed a three-month evaluation already. And she's very capable of handling all the other project or engineering or project management style level of work besides admin assistant work.
So she passed, they're all, new employees are only on probation for three months?
Yeah, right.
I don't believe that that's correct.
Ms. Jensen?
That'd be a question for HR.
Ms. Carter?
Mitzi Carter for the record, human resource director, manager of whatever I'm, excuse me. She has passed her probationary period of one year. She would be eligible for a thirty-day probationary period under a new classification per the policy procedures manual.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So so she did pass probation. I'm sorry, he or she, again, I don't know who the employee is. And why, why would we do a reclassification if this person is already doing the job?
Yeah, what she's handling the job is way above and beyond her original requirements. She was hired as an admin assistant work. But what, what she's doing now is more than, way more than that work, including engineering, project management style of work, which is required a lot higher knowledge, experience, or, or to do that. So she deserves a recognition of her doing this job very, very good.
Does every department do their own invoice and budget tracking, or does that go to finance?
We do our own budget tracking and if we see anything strange or not normal, we always talk with finance department, department what's going on. So we correct any mistakes if there are any.
And who's going to do the, the position that this person's currently in if this person is promoted to a new position?
Right now, we have the utilities engineering manager. She used to work as a content long before she become engineer. So she helped this budget issues with finance department. Now this new project coordinator will take over that tests or the issues with the finance department.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure we're only going to stick to positions and not people. So we can't talk about other people that are not agendized tonight.
Okay.
Do we have to hire a new person to take this person's job over if this person is promoted?
No. She's going to do the due job. Currently, I see about thirty percentage normal admin assistant work, but the other seventy percentage are real project oriented work. We are, we are not asking another position. We just expand her job responsibilities and requirements at this time.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Mendoza?
Is this said employee under contract through a CBA?
Mitzi Carter.
Represented by the union?
Mitzi Carter for the record, HR manager. She would, this position has been negotiated with the union and has been approved.
And when was that?
Oh, about a month ago. The union agreed to this reclassification.
So if the union agreed to that, how come that was never brought to us to agree to that? Do we not agree as a council on CBAs?
Ms. Jensen? Or Ms. Carter?
I'm sorry, sir. Could you repeat the question? I did not hear fully.
If this is approved already and in, in, in a contract with the union that she or he is represented by, why are you guys bringing this to us is the first question. Second question is, was this approved and signed by somebody and not presented to the council? If it was approved a month ago, because I don't remember hearing about this.
Sir, just for the record, we had a meeting with the union today and I have it on record with, through my emails with the business agent that this was actually about a month, not a month ago, excuse me, a week ago that he approved this. He had questions and we talked about it and then he approved it.
I think Councilman Mendoza's question is, is how come it didn't come before this council for approval? Is it a new job?
So we were bringing it to City Council. We had been under advisement to also go to the union for their clarification if they had any questions and to ensure that there was, that answers were being provided to you.
Okay, so my next question is, if there's an MOU in place or a revision to the contract, who approves and assigns the new CBA? This council or somebody on staff?
As I understand it, with negotiations and MOUs, that has to go through mayor, city clerk signs, and the, or excuse me, the business agent. and the, or excuse me, the business agent.
With no reference to the council in regards to the purse or how this money is spent via the CBA?
Sir, I do not have a MOU in front of me to reference who exactly signs that.
Okay, so.
I guess, if I may, Councilman Mendoza, so this, and I'm agreeing with you, this position has a job classification. Has that classification for this job been approved by this council?
Sir, that is what Mr. Kim is requesting.
Yeah, I, I want to see the language. I don't want to see a presentation and a justification from the department head. I want to see what the language states within the contract, since we are responsible for that contract. I also want clarification from staff as to when there is a change within the contract, the CBA with any CBA, that we are presented with those language changes. Because I don't think we could approve somebody new job description if we haven't even reviewed the contract that is tied to that job description. That makes sense to me. I don't know if it makes sense to anybody else. But if we're in a contractual agreement with a local that is representing an employee, approving a job description for one employee isn't my issue. Approving the MOU or the CBA is what I want to do.
I understand that, sir. There is no MOU in place. There has not been one signed yet.
Okay, but you guys did tell me that you guys negotiated this and the union approved it. So we haven't seen the approved, I mean, this is a negotiation thing. And I'm not going to approve or approve a job description change if there was a change within the CBA without seeing the CBA.
This, sir, the CBA was not changed?
Yeah, then something needs to be talked about with the union. I think there's more to this that needs to be researched. If she is a union represented employee and there's a job description change, and it's not approved by the union, we're going to run ourselves into another issue with the union. So we need to start from scratch, in my opinion. And we need to confront the union, talk to them about this position to see if they're willing to allow it. Unless this member doesn't want to be represented by the union anymore. So I think we're jumping way ahead of ourselves and skipping some steps.
Councilman Torres?
I, I think it, what it looks like is she's already working outside of her job description, which we can't do that. So I, I would suggest that we have the discussions, bring this back, get things cleaned up, and make sure she's not working outside of her job description until we get to that point. So that's, that's my suggestion.
Is there any further discussion on this matter? And if not, I'll entertain a motion to bring this back in a letter at our next meeting. Go ahead, Councilman Torres.
Mr. Mayor, that's, that's my motion. Madam Clerk, did you get that? All right, that's my motion.
Okay, looking for a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Councilman Torres, seconded by Councilman Mendoza. No further discussion, please vote. And motion carries five zero. Thank you. Now moving on to light item nine point three, discussion possible action to approve and appoint the deputy city manager Lydia Altek as acting city manager during the recruitment process for a new city manager. And first of all, before we get started on this, I'd like to apologize to council. This should have been brought back at the last meeting. I was on vacation and the next meeting I didn't have enough time to put it on the agenda. So that's why it is on this agenda. I want to thank Councilman Torres for also bringing it to my attention that, that this appointment also has to be conferred by this council. So that's what this is about. Councilman Lau?
You have him ready to make a motion.
Do we have any discussion, Councilman Torres, go ahead?
I only, I only had like two simple questions. I only want to know, and what I'm asking is what has changed since May? And, and you guys know that from your conversations from the adamant being the acting city manager. And I know juggling both sides is extremely difficult. I totally get that. And I know that Mrs. Altek made it very clear that she did not want to be the acting city manager until we fill the position. And I'm only asking what has changed in that time?
Uh, she didn't want to be the act, she didn't want to be the acting city manager?
That's, that's what I was told several times in the interim shortly before the previous city manager gave his resignation, then there was an issue with her. And if I'm mistaken, then, you know, that's my correct.
I wasn't under that impression. I thought, I didn't think it was going to take this long to recruit. And like you're saying, it is really hard for myself to try to juggle to be, to be the mayor as well as acting city manager, running the day-to-day operations. I, I did it for a few months since May, and it just got to be too much. I mean, I was morning to night in meetings and stuff. And, and Ms. Altek is more educated in the, in the management part of running the city than I am. And so therefore, I asked her if she would take over while I was gone on vacation. When I came back, you're correct, I should have brought that back, but I didn't have enough time to put it on the agenda. So that's why it's on now. So that's.
Thank you. But that's all.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Mendoza, then Councilman Lau, then Councilman Hannan.
Yeah, I, I just wanted just to make a quick statement that I would have appreciated more of a dialogue in regards to how we were going to move forward after you wanted to set aside from the acting city manager and just had more discussion as opposed to just throwing somebody on the agenda and presenting them to us. But this is a wrap, and I just wanted to make that known. That's all.
Okay, thank you. And I can certainly do that, Councilman Mendoza. I don't, I do not have a problem communicating with this council whatsoever. So, okay, thank you. Councilman Lau?
I was, I was, I was ready to make a motion.
Councilman Hannan?
I yield to Councilman Lau.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, Councilman Lau?
I recommend to move forward with appointing Lydia Altek as the acting city manager during the recruitment process for a new city manager.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Lau, seconded by Councilman Hannan. Please vote if there's no further discussion. Seeing none while you're voting, I just wanted to kind of clear up a little bit on, on where we are in the process of CPS HR during the recruitment. Right now, we're in the process of, am I able to talk about this? Ms. Jensen?
It's not agendized, but you can do it during your reports if you recall that item, sir.
Okay, it's not agendized, so I won't talk about it. If you want to know what's happening with the CPS HR, please contact me and I'll, I'll let you know where, where we stand on that in the process. Okay, thank you. Did we have that vote? Motion carried four to one? Okay, thank you. Uh, let's see, line item 10, this is a portion of the public forum. This portion of the meeting is devoted to the public. If you wish, you can comment or do so in person at the meeting or raise your hand, feature Zoom star nine if you're participating phone. Is there any public input at this time?
Fran McKay, resident of Ward five, former councilwoman. I just want to say that while I was on the council, there was an incident when Stan Lau got really loud and aggressive, and Mayor Agington had to take him to the back room and cool him down before we could resume our meeting.
That's it.
Thank you. Is there anybody on Zoom? Is there anybody on Zoom? Okay, let's go ahead. Who's the first one on Zoom? If you would, hold on just a minute. I didn't see you coming up here, so I call on Zoom.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, good evening. For the record, my name's Tom Dunn. I'm the vice president of the Reno Firefighters Association, the district vice president for the professional firefighters in Nevada. I was watching the meeting tonight based on the social media post I saw from the local news channels about covering the meeting tonight. While you were discussing item six point two and took a recess, your pool pack attorney made some, I will, I will use the term unprofessional comments about the process that took place to include addressing one council member by, by name specifically, which was Councilman Torres. In my professional opinion, you guys should look at potentially getting some new representation in any investigation that's currently being conducted by that pool pack attorney and or her firm based on the comments tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments. Tessa Garvin, go ahead.
Hi, I would like to second that, and I've obviously have already said what she said, and it was, albeit entertaining, but very extremely unprofessional. I, I could not believe it. Um, I will also say to Councilman Hannan, I like you. You do very good for your, your constituents, your community, and for the city of Fernley. And I really encourage you to think hard on who you're going to hitch your wagon to on this, on this issue with Councilman Lau. I know you guys are friends. You can still be friends. But I think that you know what is right and what is not right. And if anybody else were to do anything like this, I know you would be the first person to say what's right and what's not right. This doesn't have any impact on, you know, how I feel about how, how you govern as a council person. But I just would really like to see that, how the community, how you represent the community in this situation. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's it? Go ahead, Michael?
Hello, Michael Oaks, for the record, a ex-Fernley, City of Fernley resident. Saw the social media posts on the news and, and wanted to make a comment based on, on what I heard tonight. I too heard the pool pack mayor make the comments about wanting to turn her license back into the state and go be a greeter at Walmart, so I hope it works out for her. One of the things that just boggles my mind is, you know, I heard the, the comment from Councilmember Torres saying that he was asked to go out in the parking lot by Councilman Lau and how Councilman Hannan didn't see that as any kind of a threat. But yet Councilman Hannan also filed a restraining order against Fire Captain Bill Schneider as a result of Bill standing next to him in a meeting, put his hand on his shoulder and waving his hand over his head. Councilman Hannan felt threatened by that event. So I just wanted to point out, I'm confused that he can see certain events that are threatening, but yet other events he finds not threatening at all. So I'm just dumbfounded by it and, and wanted to just kind of put it out there on the record and.
Thank you for your comments. Ms. Dittman, go ahead.
I know better than that. I have several comments. First of all, I have been at city councils where Mr. Lau has been rude, obnoxious, angry. And I've called him out on public comments about it in the past. Next, I know I made a comment about this before. First, let me address that I actually lied that I said I wouldn't be coming up here again. So I want to make that right that I did lie. I own it. But I do remember making a comment to the mayor that he actually is not the acting city manager. He was only hired to be the mayor. You are the CEO though. You're just not the acting city manager. And you know, if you can prove me wrong, I will accept that. The other thing you were saying, you'd like the, the city to do business like they should. Well, you know, maybe that 50 cents, you could go to the state of Nevada, ask them for money to do the inspections on the hydrants. You know, it's going to provide safety for us, and obviously there's no money in the budget, so it's just a win-win. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any, anybody else on Zoom? Any other public comment? Is there anybody on the phone? No? Oh. We had another comment here, public comment.
Hi, Becky Hallip for the record. I know that you approved sanctioning Councilman Lau. I was going to call you Sal, I couldn't put your name together. But you never said what the sanctions were or listed off the committees that he was on. So I was wondering if you were going to do that or, or not. Thank you.
Ms. Jensen, am I allowed during public comment to say what committees that Councilman Lau will now be off?
You can, yes, because it has been agendized. It is part of it. You just have to recall that agenda item for that purpose.
So I need to have somebody, I'd like to recall the six point one?
For the purpose of reading off the committee.
I'd like to recall the agendized item six point one to read off Councilman Lau's committee that he was on that he will now be removed from. Um, do I need, do I need to have a motion or a second or something on that, or just do it?
You, you have the authority to recall the item, and then you can ask them if they're going. The motion already included removal from the committees. This is just information on what committees those are.
Okay, so this is informational on six point one. So here it is. Councilman Lau was on Capitol Improvements Committee with Councilman Hannan. He was also on, let's see here, Nevada League of Cities with Councilwoman Zaberski. And he was on, he was on Western Nevada Development District with myself and acting city manager Lydia Altek with Councilman Torres being the alternate. He was also the alternate on City County Room Tax Board, Neighborhood Watch Representative, and Northern Nevada Development Authority, Regional Transportation Commission, the STEM Committee. And he will be removed from those committees. And then I will be asking this council at our next meeting, who would like to be put on those, those committees in his place? So that's, that's the report on the committees that Councilman Lau was previously on. So our next meeting will be October 1st at 5:00 PM.
You were, you were in the middle of a public comment.
There you go. Thank you. I, I didn't see you sitting down. Go ahead, public comment.
Michael Moore for the record. Mr. Mayor, council, nice to see you all. Brandy, nice to see you here today. First of all, Mr. Mendoza, thank you for bringing this up. I know in the city, I don't know everyone, but I know a lot of people, they felt like it was getting brushed underneath the table. It wasn't being brought up. But legal had the right on our first meeting. It was too much too soon. I respect that. You guys needed to take your time. Aaron was here. He brought it up the right way. So here we are weeks later and it's, it's brought back up. So thank you. Mr. Torres, thank you for your support on that. I appreciate that very much. Mr. Hannan, I see you all the time. You're always very nice to me. We always have conversations. I, I see you were saying nice things about Mr. Lau. I, I, I guess it looks different to me now if you really did pay his bail. It doesn't look right to me. If you would have had somebody else pay the bill, maybe different. But I see where you were sticking up for him, kinda. But you did say some things I agree with. Every man has a right to prove his innocence. I agree with that a hundred percent. You made a good point. The problem is, I have is, who's paying for it? We got this lady on the speakerphone. What, what was, what organization was she, guys? Pool pack, thank you. We have Brandy's time. We have a third party person looking into this. We already spent four hundred, three, four hundred thousand dollars to buy out a city manager that wasn't doing his job. I don't want to pay for any of this. We're all taxpayers. Everyone here pays, I don't want to say your salary, but we pay our taxes. We spent four hundred thousand dollars, guys, to get rid of someone. That was our tax money. That could have went to the park, maybe fixer fire hydrants, who knows, okay? But I, I don't know how it all gets paid. I'll be honest with you. I don't know if pool pack's free. I don't know if this third party person that's investigating, they all work. They all want to get paid. Is it, is it us paying for it? The council, the city? How, how does that work, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, there's no comment on that.
Fair enough. I, fair enough. I, I'm okay with that. I don't want to pay for it. We already paid four hundred thousand dollars to get rid of someone that wasn't doing their job in the first place, I think. I don't know the whole story, but I just know that us taxpayers here paid a lot of money to buy out a contract. I'll, I'll stop with that. With that said, I've had time with Mr. Lau. As you know, some of you know, I ran for city council, kind of a corrupt situation here. But he never said anything nice. I've had confrontation with him. He's a hothead. I've been to the gym. He's a hothead. I think he's going to cause us problems. I think he should pay the bill to prove his innocence. I think he should be relieved of his duty. I think he should be temporarily suspended, and I think he needs to go get his own attorney and come back, and we don't pay a dime. If he wants to prove his innocent, let him pay for the bill. Have a nice night, guys. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Any other further public comment?
As you know, my husband always talks the money, I'm the emotional support. So Ryan, I love you. You know that. I truly believe, deep down inside, you're a really good person, and you have a big heart, and you try to see the good in others. I know that. I've been assessing people for over thirty years in retail and now in HR, so it doesn't take me long to figure people out. I just really want you to heed the previous caller and what she mentioned. Not in a judgmental state, but being really a true friend. I think you were trying to be a, a good friend, but you ended up being an enabler. That's a really dangerous zone for any of us. If you really want to help your friend, you'd look at the whole picture and not just one incident. But what has been built here by many, many voices on the phone, in the audience, on the panel is a whole character picture of somebody that's unstable and highly escalated in various incidents, not with one person, but with multiple. That should paint the true picture of somebody's character. Being a friend is having the resources for that person. And what you've done has been an enabler. So just try to be self-aware of what you've done. And when you're a true friend, you help the other person become self-aware. The other statement that raised concerns for me was when you said, and it was probably just being defensive, like we all can be when some, we favor somebody, is that they put him on blast. They put him on blast? No. Even when I, as an imperfect human, do something wrong, I have to own it. He has to own it. Nobody put him on blast. Anybody being arrested put themselves on blast, regardless of what the outcome may be in the final decision. So keep that in mind as well. The other reason I don't mention his name is, I think based off the character that's been presented by multiple voices, he's a narcissist, so I'm not going to mention the name. But I know you have strong attachment, so always be careful. In my past, whenever I'm emotionally attached to a situation, I change the players. So think about that, and that way you can remain objective. And think, would you have done that for Mr. Torres? Would you have done that for Mr. Mendoza? Then you can truly remain objective and make the right decisions in, in life, and not just on the panel. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments. Appreciate it.
Linda Carr, for the record, resident of Fernley for sixty-three years, and now I know why I don't come to meetings very often. Two questions. Actually, one's a question, one's a comment. The first question, the Boys and Girls Club over yonder here, are we going to put a fence up around that park or just let the kids run free and maybe run out on the highway or run to the whatever that jackpot gas station or whatever the heck it's called nowadays? Just a question. And then my other thing, I worked for the schools for twenty-five years. We had a bully policy. Do we have a bully policy here? Thank you. Good night.
Uh, Ms. Carr, had a que, what, what was your comment about the Boys and Girls?
Uh, are you going to put a fence around the little park play area? For safety of the children? Because it's kind of close to the highway. And it's close to the gas station, and it's close to some of the homeless people living there. It's just kind of not very safe, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Roy Edgington, for the record. Having sat in that seat, having sat in that seat for eight years, having sat with a mayor that I was pretty impressed with tonight, and what I've seen, this is a repeat of what I saw twelve years ago, fifteen years ago when I got on the council. It was lit, it was bitter, childish. It was really tough. We sat in here in this room, we had this entire room packed with people because we had to pay, make a tough decision. We had to raise the water rates. We had two police officers, two, two sheriff's deputies. And after the conversation, they weren't sure they could have kept the peace. I'm really disappointed we have to have deputies here for something like this. I know Leroy's rolling over in his grave. I know I really argued about coming to meetings over the last year and a half, and I've stayed away intentionally. But I am very disappointed in the behavior. It was unacceptable. And I would remind, and I reminded one of the councilmen, it's not necessarily, and Mrs. Jensen pounded this in my head, it is not necessarily that you did an error. It's the, or an impropriety, it's that visually people think you did an error. That's something you have to remember, that when people look at you as you sit here and you go out in the community, and you know, you can't even go to Walmart without somebody stopping you and asking you a question or this or that. My wife stopped shopping with me because of that. But it's the air of impropriety that you need to remember. I'm not saying something happened or didn't happen, but it looks bad. And that makes us look bad. And I will remind the mayor that every mayor and every town board before you and every county commission before them always wanted to see the place get better. Don't think I didn't want to see it get better. Don't think Leroy didn't want it. Davy Sticks. We all wanted to see this get better. But this infighting has to stop. People on the outside, you heard, people were listening, social media, in other communities, asking what in the is going on here. You need to sit down and figure that out. We had a problem. What we wound up doing was HR, legal, we got ahold of somebody and we went, and we had a retreat with the council. And we talked about our differences. I might suggest, you might think about that. I'm done. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, you're, you're done. Your time's up. I do appreciate your comments. I really do. All right, if there's no further comments, next meeting is October.